This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. If everybody could stand and please face the flag of our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please note this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anybody recording this meeting? Please notify me at this time. Seeing none, I'd note for the record, participating in tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Liz Klein, Board Member, and Joe Fisher, Board Member. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Are you ready to proceed, Joe?
I don't believe we have minutes.
Oh, we have no minutes this evening. See that? Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Father Bills in Mainspring for the donor reception to be held at Hingham Shipyard on Tuesday, September 27, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. I believe that Mr. Tim McDonald is going to present tonight. Tim, are you online?
Yes, sir. I'm here on Zoom.
How are you? All right.
So our event will be similar to our past donor receptions that we held at this Hingham Shipyard. It will be a little larger this time. We're expecting between 125 and 150 guests, but we'll be having a tent behind the restaurant down at the Hingham Shipyard. We'll be inviting our guests from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. and we're looking forward to the shipyard.
You've dropped off a little bit at the end, Tim. Just can I repeat that last?
Well, it will just run from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We'll have four food vendors there, which we work with the Hingham Board of House. We'll have our police detail there as usual, and we're just looking forward to being able to gather at the Hingham Shipyard again.
Excellent, Tim. Thanks very much. Let me just check with Tom. Any concerns from the police department?
Nope. They've provided a letter that he's reviewed and is going to provide that detail and otherwise is okay with it.
Great. Everything seems to be in order. Let me see if anybody has any questions from the board. Liz?
No questions. I reviewed the application.
Joe?
No questions.
Thank you. All right. Any questions from the public? All right, seen none, I take a motion.
I'll move to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Father Bills in Mainspring for the donor reception to be held at Hingham Shipyard on Tuesday, September 27, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion made in second. It all was in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Tim, best of luck with your event. Great organization. Hope you guys do well.
Thank you very much.
All right. Have a great event. Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Steel Wagon Beer Company, LLC, for the sunset picnic at Weir River Farm to be held on Thursday, September 29, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Think we have Ann Smith White on the line with us today, or do we have Michael? I see Ann on there. Ann, good evening.
Hi, everybody.
How are you? All right, Ann.
How are you?
Good. Tell us about your event.
Well, my snow day for Stellwagen is through, too. This is the last of areas. This is the last of our sunset picnic mix for the summer. Just like all the rest, we'll be at Weir River Farm 140 Turkey Hill Lane. Sunset is early. It's about 7:00, so it's, we'll go until maybe 7:15.
Michael, you want to add anything?
No, I don't have too much to add other than we plan to, you know, follow the same procedures that we had earlier this summer or late spring after we did the sunset picnics in June. So we'll just have our, you know, we'll have our mobile beer trailer and a couple of cores serving guests for the picnic.
Great. So this is the same, manage the same protocol as you guys usually do for these events, correct?
Correct.
All right. Tom, any administrative concerns?
Nope. Just to remind everyone that the note here is that they will work with Officer Kilroy to discuss the need for a detail, as the chief noted, but otherwise no other concerns.
Joe, any questions?
No, I think Michael's becoming a regular here. So, no, I've reviewed the application. No questions.
Liz, any questions?
No questions or concerns. Thank you.
Any questions or concerns from the members of the public? Seen none, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Steel Wagon Beer Company, LLC, for the sunset picnic at Weir River Farm to be held on Thursday, September 29, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Don't go far. We got another one coming up for y'all. All right. So next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Steel Wagon Beer Company, LLC, for the fall fest at Weir River Farm to be held on Saturday, October 1, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So, Michael, any changes to this event?
No, it'll be the same procedures from us. We'll bring our mobile beer trailer. We'll have a couple of our tips or staff there for. I think the layout is a little bit different. It'll be similar to the spring fest that we did earlier this year where, you know, we're a little bit further down the hill, but as far as the serving goes, it'll be the same for us.
Ann, anything to add?
No, I think that covers it.
Liz, any?
We'll work with Officer Kilroy.
Right.
Great. Thank you. Obviously, this is a lot more people. So, thank you. No other questions.
I'm sorry. Tom, any concerns?
It was, Ann just said at the end, so the note from the chief is that they work with Officer Kilroy to determine the detail, which she just said they would do.
So a large event, obviously, yeah. So obviously, you need to coordinate with the police department here. So, great. Thank you. I'm sorry, Liz, do you have anything else?
Nope. No other questions. Thank you.
Joe, any questions?
No questions, although I do have a question for Tom. Did we get any comments from any of the neighbors or butters on this?
No.
Great. Okay. Nothing. No questions.
Do any members of the public have any questions or concerns? All right, seen none, I take a motion.
I will move to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Steel Wagon Beer Company, LLC, for the fall fest at Weir River Farm to be held on Saturday, October 1, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. All right. Michael, Ann, best of luck with your final event of the season, I think.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Take care.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Brian Donovan on behalf of Galley Kitchen and Bar for the Mad Love Music Festival to be held at the South Shore Conservatory on October 9, 2022, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I think, and you can mute. I think, Brian, is that you? If you can mute? Okay, hold on. Some background noise there. From 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Okay, Brian, why don't you try to come back on now?
Sorry about that. I'm just having a little trouble hearing on my computer, and then I got the feedback.
Is that, is that feedback? Or are you in, are you in an area that's a little noisy?
Can you hear me okay? I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can't hear you that, that well.
All right. You can try calling me.
Is he able to adjust this?
I'm not sure. I think he's trying to call in. See if he can get it.
I think this is him on the phone here.
That was already there.
Oh, it was?
Somebody different.
You want to hit star six if you can hear us? There you go.
Hi, there.
Mr. Donovan, can you hear me at all?
Yes, I can.
I think he's in a noisy.
Yeah, I think, sir, I think the issue is, I think that the area you're calling in from is a little noisy. Can you move to a different location?
Yeah, let's try that. Hold on one sec.
I think he's out there.
All right. How was that?
That's, that's better.
That's definitely better. All right. All right. Tell us a little bit about your event and what you, what you're planning to do.
All right. So this is our eighth year working with the girls of Mad Love. It's an event that they raise money to, for the kids at the conservatory to give them a good education. They have five bands. We provide beer, and we also do a food truck as well. And, yeah, it's been a success every year.
So you did this, you told you, you did the same event last year at the conservatory?
Yes, we, I mean, I think you said we did this last year. We did.
Okay, great. Let me ask Tom, and how did the event, any, how did the event go last year? And any, any concerns?
Yeah, no problems. The chief had absolutely no issues, and it's done, it's, the parking is not a concern. They do it at the conservatory. It's a, it's a regular recurring event.
Great. My recollection is it went very well last year, and I know it's a great cause. Let me see if anybody has any, any questions. Liz?
No questions. I, I'm familiar with this event. I think it's run smoothly over several years, and I know they're working on a police detail. So no questions or concerns.
Joe?
No questions.
Great. Any questions or concerns from the public? All right, seen, seen none. Mr. Donovan, why don't you mute your line while, while we make the motion so it doesn't get, so it comes through okay? There we go. All right. With that, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Galley Kitchen and Bar for the Mad Love Music Festival to be held at the South Shore Conservatory on October 9, 2022, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries unanimously. All right, sir, good luck. All right. All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider the issuance of a limousine license to Wahid A. Jan doing business as Wahid Transportation Incorporated. I believe Mr. Jan is here tonight. Sir, come off the podium if you don't mind. Good to see you again. I remember you from, I remember you from last year. Good to see you.
I think so, yeah.
All right. So just tell us a little bit about your business and, and about your application and what you, what you're asking for us to do tonight.
Yeah, you know, my business is limo service, you know, and service Hingham, you know, surrounding area to Logan Airport in Boston.
Great. And how long have you been in business for?
Almost from '27.
Great. Wonderful. And, and Tom, when I looked at the application, everything just seems to be in order?
Everything is here. Heidi is here if we have questions, but we received the certificate of insurance. We have the registration. The inspection was done by the police department and all passed. The chief has no, no concerns. He's cleared as Corey. Everything's been done.
Great. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Joe, any questions?
Yeah, Tom, I just want to be clear. Are we doing a license for the vehicle or for the business? Do you know?
For the business.
For the business?
Yeah. That would be my.
Right. And essentially, there's, there's one vehicle that's being licensed, so it's essentially the same. Great. No, I've got no questions. Looking forward to utilizing your services. Great. Thank you.
Any questions from any members of the public? All right, seen none, I take a motion.
I move to approve the issuance of a limousine license to Wahid A. John, DBA Wahid Transportation, Inc., effective through December 31, 2022, in accordance with the application for a limousine license filed with the Town of Hingham on August 30, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Mr. John, good to see you again.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider modifying the first week of early in-person voting hours for the November 8, 2022 state election. We'd have a town clerk with us tonight. Carol, good to see you.
Nice to see you all.
Come on up.
Carol Falvey, town clerk.
Excellent.
So, the default for early voting for the, the November 8 election is to be open for two weeks during normal business hours for the two weeks preceding the November 8 election. Based on the dismal in-person attendance we had prior to the primary, we had just under 200 people over the course of six business days, and I think I told you all, it's about five people an hour. I am, which I'm allowed to do under the Votes Act, allow the select board to reduce the first week only of early voting to 50%. And I would like for you to consider that because it saves on time and money, and every day that we have early voting, there's a process we go through in the town clerk's office where we update our voter records from VRIS. We have to move that information onto the poll pads, get them all set up for the workers that come in. So it's, it's quite a lengthy process, and it's going to save us some time and money. So, and with even doubling the 200 people for a bigger election to 400, we still have two weeks of in-person voting. And as I, I think I pointed out in my statistic, most people are voting early by mail. They're not coming in. Or they're either coming to the polling location, or they're coming, they're, they're sending their ballot by mail.
Carol, thanks. Yeah, I did look at the numbers. It was awfully small, so.
Yeah.
It seems, seems to make sense, and it, and the mail-in ballots were very high, so it seems the best to use the resources to focus on processing.
I think that was across the state. I think I sent you the, this article that was in the Boston Globe where Secretary Galvin talked about the amount of early by-mail votes as opposed to in-person. It's a significant number. Also, while I'm here, I'd just like to make a plug that if you ask for an early ballot, please do fill it out and send it back. We had, I'll give you a little statistic here. We had requests for 3,762 early ballots, and about 1,200 were, 1,200 were not returned to us. So at postage of $1.20 each, plus the amount of time, there's like a multi-step process to input all this information to send it out. It's a lot of time and money in terms of our office. So I'm all for it. Ask for a ballot, but please send it back.
Thank you, Carol. Joe, any questions?
Yeah, is there just historically a difference between primaries and?
The general election.
General election in terms of people coming in to do early voting? Like the number of participation, like primaries, 20%?
So I'm looking at 2018. It's about double.
Okay, so even at double, this, this works? So, yep.
Yeah, I'm not worried about it.
Yeah. Okay. No other questions?
Thursday, have any questions?
It makes sense to me. Thank you, Carol. Can you just confirm for week one what those business hours will be, just so people know?
So I am going to publicize this in early October. We're actually required to publish it on the website, and we have to also file it with the Secretary of State's office. At this point in time, I'm leaning towards Monday, Tuesday, and Friday as the hours, but I am reserving a little bit of flexibility to see what my staff situation is and the election workers that I can get to come in.
Okay.
To do that. But it will definitely, my plan is to do it for three days instead of five. Instead of having it five days for a shortened amount of time, be three days for a fuller amount of time, including the Tuesday.
Okay.
Which would probably, most likely go all, most of the day.
Okay.
Being our late, late night here.
Okay. Great. I think that's easier for people to remember and.
Sure.
Make work. Okay. Great. Thank you.
And I'll also be, I'm doing an article with Carol Meyer from The Anchor, so we're going to be promoting a lot of this in the next couple of weeks before the ballots all go out, the early ballots go out.
Great. Thank you.
Carol, thank you. Any members of the public have any questions or comments? All right, seen none, I would take a motion.
I will make a motion in accordance with the provisions of Section 25 BB 3 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022, the Select Board hereby determines that in-person voting shall be held by the Town of Hingham as follows: For a minimum of six hours on the weekend of October 22 and 23, and for a minimum of six hours on the weekend of October 29 and 30, in accordance with the schedule determined by the local election officers; and for a minimum of 50% of the usual business hours of the town clerk's office for the week of Monday, October 24, 2022, through Friday, October 28, 2022, in accordance with the schedule determined by the local election officers; and during the usual business hours of the town clerk's office for the week of Monday, October 31, 2022, through Friday, November 4, 2022, in accordance with the schedule determined by the local election officers; and provided further that a schedule of the dates, hours, and location of in-person voting shall be published in accordance with Section 25 BB 5 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Carol, good seeing you.
Good to see you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a naming bylaw committee update, and we do have the Chair with us, Phil. Good to see you. Good evening.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Phil Edmondson, and I'm the Chair of the Naming Bylaw Committee. I just, I don't know if it's important to note, but our, we have a meeting posted concurrently, so.
Excellent. Yeah. Phil, why don't you come on up? You want to, want to join us up here? We got a mic for you. Yeah, I'm letting you sit. I'm not going to put you at the podium then.
So as Victor just suggested, we'll actually call, call to order our meeting as well then, so.
And you're welcome to adopt the language of the, of the remote meeting that I, you can just say adopt the meeting.
Thank you, and we would adopt that same language. Thank you for, for your direction from my first appearance in a, in a post-pandemic environment.
I thought you brought counsel with you for this presentation.
I certainly have some great committee members. So this committee, obscure though it may be, has been toiling away somewhat irregularly for several years based on a vote of an earlier town meeting and then your direction and help with naming our full committee. We are here tonight to give you a bit of an update and to seek some advice on a couple of questions. We don't necessarily expect you'll be able to answer those questions this evening, and so if you need us to come back next week or a month from now, we are at your service. So first, you should have received three packages of information. I'm going to assume you probably haven't had too much time to read them. Is that a good assumption? But it's, we'll cover them very briefly, the three packages, what came. And then, as I say, we have kind of a broader question of where we're looking for input from the Select Board about how we should advance our work. One of those packages would have come from Wendy Allison, and that package included a listing of the outreach that we have performed. So in accordance with the, with the vote of town meeting and the, and the work of the committee, we have sought input from organizations throughout the town, and we heard from a lot of them despite the fact most of that was during the pandemic, done remotely, but we had a lot of input, both from sports groups, which I would say were most highly represented, but from other town organizations. We reached out to every town committee and organization that we could identify that would have any relevance at all, and we tried to summarize some of that, those results, in our first package. The second package, I think maybe Christine could speak to. Are you able, would you like to swap with me here or speak from there? How, how does it do it?
It doesn't matter.
Christine and, and Victor also have a couple of minutes to.
Can we accommodate everybody up here? We'd love to have you all up here.
Sure.
Good, yeah. If we, yeah. And Victor, Christine, good to see you. Welcome. Yeah. Good to see you all.
So I'll share sort of my section of the report, which was reaching out to our benchmark communities. And, and actually, we asked the town clerk in January of this year to help us with that effort because we were, we were struggling a little bit with trying to get information from our, from those communities. And so the town clerk did send out an email to all of our benchmark communities asking specifically around what bylaws are in place around naming in those communities. And remarkably, we actually heard from most of the benchmark communities. And in your package that you received, there's sort of a summary. I'll cover a few of the highlights, but there's an Excel spreadsheet that you should have received as well, which has a lot more of the detailed information in terms of what our benchmark communities are doing. We also got some information from two non-benchmark communities, Hanover and, I'm trying to remember the other town, Hanover and Newton, that we also included. But I would just say, in terms of a few highlights from the information that we shared with you, that about half of the, our benchmark communities are silent on a naming bylaw, which we thought was sort of interesting, that they're silent about it. And the other, sort of when you look at the other half of our benchmark communities, we found varying, varying information. A couple of them, it was very clear, Hanover and Wellesley have a bylaw in place. Wellesley, by far, in terms of the research we did, has the most detailed, they have both a bylaw and a Select Board policy. Very detailed. I can provide you that level of information if you want it. I have that information. In addition to that, some of our other benchmark communities seem to have what we call a policy, a Select Board policy in place. Those benchmark communities include Lexington, Needham, Norwell, and Winchester. So they have some sort of policy in place that helps to advise their Select Board in terms of naming. Hanover, by the way, just, just for your information, does have a bylaw in place as well. And of those communities that had either a bylaw or a policy in place, many of them sort of leave it up to the Select Board or the local board, whoever has authority for whatever we want to try to name, gives them the power after some sort of public input to, you know, to be able to do the, the final naming of something. However, that's not true of all of those benchmark communities. Some of them do require a meeting, or for town meeting. Specifically, Norwell, Wellesley, and Hanover all required a process that would involve a vote at a town meeting. And then in addition to that, I'd say the only other thing of, of real note is two, two of our benchmark communities, Norwell and Winchester, do not allow a facility to be named after a living person. Those were the only two that we could find that had that stipulation. I'm only pointing that out because in our current bylaw, we are very specific on that, and so I thought that was sort of a interesting point. So I think that was most of the highlights that I wanted to share. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll get into, try to integrate the comments in a minute, but we'd like to ask, ask Victor next to help you understand the possible complexity of this question by going through some of the policy matters.
We did spend a fair bit of time discussing potential issues if we were doing a thorough rewrite of a bylaw or a policy, I suppose. And you should have among the materials you received a memo sort of listing in those, a number of those issues. So just to break down in terms of the topics, one item that we think was, you know, generating interest in reviewing the bylaw was the possibility of the sale of naming rights. So we considered whether the sale of naming rights would, how that would interact with traditional naming for honoring people. Is there some tension there? Should they go along the same track? That type of thing. And not just naming for people, the naming, the existing naming bylaw applies to any naming, so for a geographical place or, or any name you want to come up with is required to go through currently the. to go through currently the naming bylaw procedure. We talked about how public lands perhaps are different from buildings in the sense that, well, not all public lands necessarily, but we noted the Conservation Commission has not been following the naming bylaw, doesn't seem to have raised any issues with anyone, but is that something that should be recognized in whatever bylaw or policy we're going ahead with? Another general topic of, of issues is procedures, I mean what procedures govern naming, whether it's for honoring, for selling, should the decision be left up at town meeting, as Christine was suggesting some towns are doing and we do currently, does it depend on the goal of the, of the, the facility or the goal of the naming in a particular case? Who should be advising on naming? Currently, the Historical Commission has a key role to advise the Select Board on its recommendations at town meeting. Questions have been raised as to whether the Historical Commission is the appropriate body to do that in all cases. Why are other committees not given a similar role for facilities that they may have a, an interest in? Other considerations or general topics are, should athletic facilities be treated differently? As Phil noted, we heard a lot of input from sports groups, and this certainly seems to be a concern with them, need to raise money for capital projects, but also for things like ongoing maintenance of fields, new dugouts, how do you, how do you meet their, their needs? That brings us to the issue of, is naming the only way to raise money for whether it's sports groups or for other town facilities? Can gratitude, plaques of gratitude or other recognition of donors arrive at the same, same result? Then there are considerations, specific perhaps, to naming rights, the sale of naming rights, so if the town does decide to do that, how do we decide to name in any, sell naming rights in any particular situation? Should there be form contracts? How do you determine who among competing donors gets to have their, their name on a facility? Should there be a minimum life to a named facility? Whole slew of issues, and those are just a few of them. Then category of issues of eligibility for naming, getting back to what Christine was saying, other towns have looked at, and again, what our current bylaw addresses, should living people be eligible? Should it depend on the type of facility? Should it depend on whether we're naming to honor or naming for a sale of naming rights? Should town employees be eligible? Should businesses be eligible? One interesting question that was raised during our discussions is the current bylaw is worded so that no commercial, no town property shall bear the name of a commercial enterprise. Does that simply mean that it shall not be named after a commercial enterprise, or does that foreclose what I was speaking of a moment ago, of a plaque expressing gratitude for a contribution from some local business? So these are the types of issues that we identified, and as, just gave you an overview of them, but if we wanted to do a, you know, a full-blown analysis, we, in reviewing a policy or a bylaw, I think we'd want to delve into these in more detail.
To sum up here, though that's almost impossible on this issue, we, we found the issue to be much more complicated than, than we thought it might be, and the, certainly the, the town meeting vote that established this committee is very, very broad, and so we thought it appropriate to check in with this board, to seek your advice, because we could see a couple of different routes to take. The, as we told you, we met with many organizations, but most of the concerns we heard were from sports organizations, nonprofit sports organizations, they weren't looking to name buildings, but they would be interested to name features in a building, dugouts or walls or, or soda booths or other, you know, other elements as a way to help raise money, and we would certainly be prepared to make recommendations to the town in the coming months if that were your direction. It seemed like there was a lot of demand for that, and so we're here to ask you whether indeed that resonates with you. However, as I said, the, the, or as was mentioned in Chris's report, the, the bylaw that we have right now is not necessarily in step with what other towns do, that we often compare ourselves to. It's much more prescriptive, and sometimes it's not universally enforced, it's a little hard when you, when you start digging into all of this. And keep in mind, one other thing that was mentioned by, in several of our meetings, which is, we have some new facilities coming up in town, that, for which there might be an interest in naming those facilities, for any number of reasons, including potentially to raise funds to help support those facilities. So, we certainly could be prepared to go back to work and make a more thorough recommendation on all of these issues on the basis of the original town meeting vote, in a more comprehensive manner, that will take us longer to do, but we suspect that it would be controversial. Question mark.
So I guess I'll start, so, and I want to start by just thanking you for your great work, I know you've been at it well over a year here, and you took on a tough task, and it's a great committee with some very talented, very, very talented people with a lot of experience in town government, select board experience, advisory committee experience, sports experience, so thank you for what you're doing, and.
Tom on the line, too.
And, yeah, see, Tom O'Reilly on the line as well.
Oh, great, Tom was able to.
Yeah, a lot, so a lot of great experience here, very much appreciate the task you've taken on. So just, just a couple of thoughts on my end, and then I do have a quick question for you as well, but, so, I guess from my perspective, I understand opening this up wide is certainly going to invite controversy, and we're going to open up Pandora's box about a bigger issue, naming, the naming issue itself is going to just invite a lot, a lot of different perspectives, a lot of different thoughts, a lot of people are going to ask the question, why are we going down that road again? My thought would be a very, very narrow, limited scope, based on interest from a lot of citizens from the athletic community, who have certainly expressed concern to me about improving our athletic facilities, and they've come to me and they've said, we need more capital dollars in athletic buildings, field improvements, things like you have just said, dugouts, buildings, field improvements. And they've said to me, what's your plan for these capital improvements and getting dollars into these? And I said, my plan is foster school, public safety buildings, senior centers, possibly from the Thriveer School, South Hingham Fire Station, the dollars aren't going there, they're just not going to be, we just don't, the, our, our capital plan going forward are going to be school buildings, senior center, other school buildings, South Hingham Fire Station. We have, I think we've done a really good job under Tom's leadership, in conjunction with Mark Thorell in DPW, to improve the quality of our fields by diverting dollars and putting them under Mark's direction to improve the, the turf, not, you know, when I say turf, I mean the grass, and it's, it's really worked well, but in terms of bringing them to the next level, the money's not going to be there. So we need to get creative, and what I've been told by a lot of the sports partnership people, youth football, youth baseball, there are a lot of private donors out there who want to make donations to, for those dugouts, for those buildings, potential add another turf field or two, and they would like some sort of, maybe some sort of recognition on a smaller scale. Now I don't want to see Home Depot Field with giant lights, giant signs, I don't want to see anything like that, but they would like an easy path to try to make that happen. So my thoughts would be a very narrow, limited scope, maybe specific to athletic fields, athletic facilities, if that's possible, and I know, like you said, Phil, this, it is challenging, it's not easy. So I guess my, my question to you, Christine, when you mentioned that some of these, some of these towns had a bylaw and a select board policy, what, 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 how did that work? How did those two play together? Did a bylaw address some, some facilities and the select board policy address others?
I mean, I, I, we only, I only found, we can only confirm that there were two benchmark communities with an actual bylaw, Bill, most of them just had, it seemed like it was more of a policy, a select.
So it was or, it was either or, they didn't have both?
Most of the times, except in those two cases with the two towns that had, that seemed to have both a bylaw and a select board policy. Wellesley in particular, I mean, they go into great lengths about everything, they, there's no carve-out though, like in, in everything I think we saw, there was no carve-out that treated like sports organizations differently. Wellesley, you know, defines what a major asset is in their, both in their bylaw and in their select board policy, and a major asset is, goes from the naming of a field to the naming of a building, it's all the things you would think about in a major asset, so.
My suspicion, Bill, in other towns, and this wasn't told to us by anyone, so this should be confirmed, but, is that in, most of the other towns don't have strict bylaws. Because of that, when they initiate a process to raise money to fix a Little League field, and they're trying to raise a hundred thousand dollars, and they want to put some names on, on some dugouts, it's not controversial, and it doesn't need an exception to a bylaw, and because of that, none of those towns have a policy about how to raise a hundred thousand dollars to, to make a great Little League field. But we are certainly glad to believe this is much more common in towns similar to Hingham than it is here. And maybe that's because, or certainly the, the voice we heard from members of many of the sports organizations was that, that because the bylaw seems to speak to that in a broad way, our town is much more restrictive, and we are, you know, we, we lose the opportunity to raise these private funds for things that are probably less controversial.
Yeah, although I, I think the bylaw would allow putting someone's name in, you know, thanking someone even by plaques, as long as they're not naming the facility after them, the bylaws going after naming the facility, with the caveat that the language of the bylaw could be interpreted to ban a commercial enterprise having its name on the.
Yeah.
But I thought.
We have Little League's teams that have commercial.
Right.
Yeah.
Names on the backs of their shirts.
And I think the sports organizations, like I don't think they're just looking for a plaque with a recognition to thank someone, I think they're looking like if they're going to build a dugout, it's going to be the Bill Ramsey dugout, like they're looking to, to name the dugout, not to have a plaque off to the side that says.
Well, you, and you, and you raise, you all raise a good point, like you've got, like Carlson Field, for example, right, and there's a beautiful plaque to Steve Carlson. Now, you know, and it has his military service there, his police service there, now a lot of us at the table, you know, we, we were friends with Steve Carlson, now, a lot of people in town, like my wife included, never knew him, right, we call it Carlson Field, but every time I go to that field, I think of him, right, because we knew him, we called it Carlson Field, but maybe some of these donors would be happy just with that plaque, right, and not really the name, but they do get the recognition with a plaque honoring their gift in some way. So, I mean, you make, make a good point, or the dugout with a name on the back of the dugout, so maybe there's another alternative that we should maybe look at as well.
But doesn't the policy allow you to do that today?
It does.
I mean, look at the, look at the high school field, we got plaques on everything up there, right?
You could do it today.
So, you, you can do that today.
But we can't, we can't have the Home Depot dugout right now.
Well, depending on how you interpret that language.
A Chevrolet scoreboard, don't we?
Well, as we said, there was, there were some inconsistencies in town policy.
No, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think that was, I don't think that was an inconsistency, I think that was, that was all, that was, that was part of, you know, following the bylaw, I thought, I mean, I believe, but.
It'd be interesting to, I, I've not gone back and looked at the town meeting tape from, if there was any discussion of this at town meeting, whether there was a distinction made, I mean, the, the language is interesting, because it says no public building or public lands shall be named for any living person, or shall bear the name of a commercial enterprise. So why would you, you know, why would you add the phrase shall bear the name of if you didn't mean it to be something different than be named for? I mean, could be just sloppiness, or it could be intentional.
My, my one last question to you, one of your thoughts on this, did you discuss whether the vesting, in terms of the limited scope of this particular issue, athletic facilities, vesting the authority to possibly place us with just a select board, and avoid going to town meeting? Now I know some might say, well, it takes it out of the, the voter's hand in the sense that, okay, we have it at a town meeting, but there, there is a check and balance in doing that, in the sense that members of a select board do stand for reelection, and there would be, if, if, if there was, but, you know, by chance that they did, the three members did something that the public disagreed with, there would be, there would be public backlash to that.
Yeah.
Not only at the ballot box, but also people would come to the meetings and, people into town.
I think that'd be plenty of accountability, Bill, I, I think the, the question you might pose of us is, are there examples of naming that could be understood to be forbidden under the bylaw, whose removal might allow the sports organizations to raise more private money, such that your board and the town at a town meeting might choose to amend the bylaw? I mean, maybe we come back to you and say, you know what, this is just a PR problem, we need to just tell the sports organizations, it's fine, you can do all these things, but I'm not sure that's, that's, that's not what we heard from them. And in different voices and in, in different specifics, they are seeking, in my interpretation, that the bylaw be changed, and so that requires a vote of town meeting, and if we had consensus and other town bodies, your board and the advisory committee said, that's a good idea, because you know what, that, that just makes life a little simpler, it's going to make for a better community, I don't think anybody would view it as a, a lack of oversight, so. I think that's the class of things we're talking about, it's not about naming Town Hall for Pepsi-Cola.
Right.
Oh, and, and Tom O'Reilly, who's one of our committee members, has this hand up if you'll allow.
I'm sorry, yeah, sure, Tom, go ahead, I didn't see you, I apologize.
We still can't hear you.
Do you need to do something to speak?
You look okay on our side, Tom.
Tom, go ahead.
No, we can't hear you.
He's speaking, but you can't hear him. Maybe he can send you a text or.
Does he need to do anything special to be heard?
No, he unmuted himself.
Okay.
Well, we have a special microphone named for Bill Ramsey under the, under the bylaw, and that's the microphone.
Please don't. Please don't even say that.
The subject can quickly grow comedic.
All right, we'll come back to you, Tom, sorry about that, we'll come back, Liz, let's go to you with questions.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Apologies, Tom, go ahead.
Thank you all for this very important work, I am very interested in this, and certainly look to your recommendations, and hopefully we can give you some direction so we can move this forward, but obviously Town Meeting, you know, asked to move this kind of due diligence forward, and it's certainly something the Sustainable Budget Task Force had as one of its revenue recommendations, was to look at this public-private partnership, and as we know, we don't have enough money for all of our capital projects across town, I do think it's critical and an important piece for us to really exhaust, and I appreciate how comprehensive you are, and I. And I appreciate how comprehensive you are in identifying the questions, and I know that's complicated. But I do think we need to go down this path. As far as the sports in a limited scope, I'd be open to that if you think that's the recommendation as maybe an initial phase, if that makes it easier to keep this moving. But I wouldn't want to see us kind of shut down everything else or all other projects at this point. I feel like it's too early in the process. I think there's opportunity for other types of buildings and capital projects, not just related to sports. So I guess I'd be interested in seeing how we align with the benchmark towns. And maybe you've already done this, but, you know, really looking at Wellesley, I haven't studied this. Looking at Wellesley's bylaw and understanding, you know, what makes sense, what we can leverage, what we would want to change for our community. But it sounds like there is a starting point with these other towns that, you know, we can kind of see what's worked and what hasn't, or what's been controversial in these other communities might help us kind of narrow down our focus. But I certainly, I think it's important, and I think, you know, my expectation was that we would go to Town Meeting in the spring with some sort of recommendation. As we're potentially asking for an override, I want the public and taxpayers to feel like we are exhausting as many other options as possible to generate revenue for the town.
I'm not asking this to be responded to right now, but as we continue a public dialogue on this, it would be helpful to, if you saw the interests of the town at this point in time, to be represented by certain possibilities and not others. So for example, in our discussions, we assumed, well, we're unlikely to have the Nike school, but we might have a Nike swimming center, you know? And so it gets pretty blurry at some point in time. And so one way you could help us, and I'm not asking for that tonight, but one way you could help us in the weeks ahead might be to say, "Here are some examples of some things in the town that through the forethought of the select board should definitely be spoken to when you come back to us next." And then we will endeavor to do that. But these things do get more and more complicated, I will say. And we want you to know that the rules the town already has in place are broader than those. We might have Tom here, so. Tom, you want to try again?
Sure. Is that any better?
Yeah, we got you. Go ahead, Tom. Tom, you just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Tom O'Reilly, 19 Portis Cove Road in Mass. 02043. Thank you. You know, I'm the new one on the panel, and I'm so appreciative of Bill and Victor and Christine and the rest of the team letting me come to the table and share some thoughts. What I was struck by at my first meeting was the scope of the issue, as Phil has very well spoken about. And I think the question that we really came back with is, should we shrink the scope? Can the committee shrink the scope so that we can at least test the objective? And that was kind of my big takeaway from our meeting. Would it make sense to say, "Let's try something, see what kind of support it generates, and maybe just do that instead of doing all the..." Phil, if I'm off on that, please correct me.
Well, I think that's not dissimilar to what I was trying to communicate earlier about the sports policy. So the sports partnerships, yes. Not the Hingham Sports Partnership, capital letters, but sports organizations.
Joe, any questions, comments?
Yeah, well, first, thanks for the committee. This committee has more brain power than we can imagine. It's exceptionally helpful. And this is, it's a tough topic, and I appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions. I heard that about half the communities have nothing. And so that could mean anything goes, or nothing goes, or something in between. And so I think I picked up that what it means is some things go and there's sort of an ad hoc process for making it happen. Is that a fair assessment? Or how was the silence?
That's conjecture from us, really. You know, we didn't hear from those towns that, "Oh, my gosh, it's a big headache here. We're trying to fix it." It's like, problem? What problem, you know? But when we request these, you know, this information, we're usually only talking to one or two people. So it's not fair to say that we have a broad assessment of how these communities have confronted the issue.
And the request was, "Do you have a naming bylaw in place?" And so the answer was either yes, no, and in a handful of cases, just silence. They didn't even respond to the original request. And then those that said yes, that's when we started to do the digger deeping, digging deeper into it to try to find their policy. In some cases, they were great. They emailed us the policy or the bylaw, but.
Yeah, we seldom get the story behind it.
Yeah, we don't know that.
Have you connected at all with the MMA, the Mass Municipal Association? They are in fact doing, because I'm on the list, they're doing a study on this right now.
Just recently, we had communication from your office with one or two new samples.
That came from me, I think. And so, yeah, so it'd be helpful to know. I guess my take is it's a big task. And I like the idea of trying something to see if it works rather than overhauling the whole thing. In part because of the time it's going to take. And it's almost an approach where we don't touch anything, but we say, notwithstanding the foregoing, we can do certain things. So that you keep in place what's there, and then here are the exceptions that we're about to try and that we have certain guidelines in place for those exceptions. I would not want to limit that to sports. I think it needs to be a generic category, so there may be a senior-related project that is just as meritorious, and it should not be excluded from the process. And I think your request to us is to identify certain types of projects. That's a great idea. I think we should do it. I would, you know, I think ultimately we need to look at a total rehab of our bylaw. But I think doing it incrementally and allowing certain projects. My initial, my initial thought was, well, the current bylaw does allow the select board to establish certain guidelines, and it's not clear about, you know, exactly where the line is. And it's that lack of clarity that I believe deters donations. Because they may get an opinion that it works, but they don't want to give the money. And then two years later, it turns out, guess what? Those naming rights are gone. So I think adding some certainty through a, what I'm calling a notwithstanding the foregoing approach, will make it clear that we can go down a path for limited projects, and we'll see how it works. Taking the guidance from other communities as an example, you know, catering them or tailoring them specifically to, you know, whatever Hingham's needs are. And then if it turns out it's not quite right, well, it's not embedded in the entire bylaw. We can then make further adjustments. But I think we need to move forward because if we are looking for perfection now, we will never get it. And three, five, 10 years from now, we'll say, "Boy, I really wish we could have had funding for these projects." So I would encourage moving forward on a narrower scope, recognizing that the bylaw will have to be totally rehabbed, but let's get moving. And so to the extent we can offer specific guidance, maybe the three of us individually can do it, and then we can meet again. But your work is just incredible. Appreciate everything you're doing here. Thanks.
Okay. Just any questions? Anybody else want to add anything? What I'm hearing is get to work on something for the sports, work on the other things as well. Let's have more communication.
And I'll get you some specific examples. It sounds like I owe you some.
We welcome everyone's input.
I think, though, Joe just raised a point, which is like, don't just limit it to the sports.
Right, and they said the same thing. That's what I heard, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, but if we can, you know, we think there's some low-hanging fruit, or it's going to be easier to find some consensus to put a sample in front of you of how we might get more specific about the sports projects in town. We think that will be easier than trying to get a written policy that distinguishes between other town assets. And it's complicated.
Is it possible or advisable to start now developing a, I think contract will be the right word, but sort of a model agreement between the person or entity that wants to donate the money and the town? And we can work out in that agreement with a lot of the issues, reputational issues, return of money, all those things? Get that hammered out. And I suspect that a lot of the policy issues can be actually worked out in that type of agreement.
Yes, it's possible. And thanks to your naming Tom O'Reilly to our committee, I think Tom brings some expertise in that, and that's going to be very helpful. But I think you'll see, once we put something in front of you, that it's still not that easy. You know, as Victor started to point out, okay, so we want to get private funds to help fund the dugout. Okay, and we want to have a contract. Okay, well, we don't want a contract for a $2,000 support. So what's the minimum? And then does it have to be 100% of the cost of the asset? Or does it have to be at least 50% or 20%? And does the naming go away after 10 to 20 years? And is there a reputational harm clause? And when you start trying to put all the moving parts into a single contract, you may have second thoughts. The judgment might be easier.
But we are not the first town to be doing this, and not limited to Massachusetts. There are model contracts out there now.
Oh, for sure. We will find model contracts for you. But most of our towns aren't doing it. And there's a reason, I suspect, why they aren't doing it. Because it's hard to find a one-size-fits-all. But we will present those to you, for sure. We hear you loud and clear. We will get those, find some samples. And if we are struggling to do that, we will ask your office for help.
I could jump back to your committee earlier comment. Are you suggesting that we look at recommended policies for the select board under the existing bylaw, which could be implemented without changing the bylaw?
No, because I think it is, and you've pointed out earlier, there are questions about to what extent, for example, can we approve a plaque that would actually allow a commercial enterprise? Maybe yes, maybe no. So I think to the extent that there are topics that you would like to delegate, that it's appropriate to delegate to the select board, that needs to be presented as a bylaw saying, "Select boards, you have this discretionary authority, notwithstanding the foregoing." So that there's no ambiguity. They come before us, we do it, and it's done.
Bill, if I just jump in just for a sec?
Sure, go ahead.
I'll be brief. So in the interest of including former select board members as giving input to this topic, I would highly recommend you reach out to former select board member Karen Johnson, who spent a good portion of her time on the board engaged in this issue. She's done a lot of research. She has a lot of ideas. She does some of this for a living. I highly recommend that you reach out to her. She should be able to give you some guidance and ideas that I think would be very helpful.
Does she know that you've just volunteered?
She does. Well, I have talked to her recently about this, talked to her before about it.
She's already doing great work on the personnel board. We volunteer her in something else. All right, I see some members of the public maybe on the line who may want to ask some questions. So does anybody on the public have any questions or comments? If you could just either raise your hand or just wave at me, and we'll recognize you. All right, seeing none. All right, before I conclude tonight, you know, Chris, you did mention that Carol Falvey of Town Clerk did assist a committee getting some information. So I do want to recognize her assistance. I appreciate her doing that. That was nice of her to kind of go out of her way to help the committee out, so thank you for that. So before I let you go, I know you're doing a lot of work, and I very much appreciate all that you're doing, all your meetings. And as you said, it's not easy, and really appreciate.
No, thanks for your patience. We've been slow during the.
No need to thank us. We thank you. Great work you're doing, so thank you.
For the much more interesting work than I expected.
Just one last note. January 20th is the deadline for articles, just saying.
You guys have a great evening. Thanks a lot. Good seeing you again.
We need to do anything to close.
Oh, yeah.
Vote to adjourn our meeting.
All right. Take care. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a summary of projected tax impact of foster school and public safety projects. And I think Tom and Michelle are going to, Tom, do you want to lead us off?
Sure, yep. We'll turn to Michelle to walk us through this. This is a follow-up to what we did last week, which was the financial plan for the two debt exclusions coming up at this Fall Town Meeting on November 1st. That is the proposed new public safety facility and the proposed new foster school project. This, what Michelle's about to walk through will outline for residents the projected tax impact in summary form. So hopefully this brings it home to the taxpayers so that they have a better understanding of how these things could help them, or will affect them directly. Michelle?
Thanks, Tom. So we just have three short slides for you tonight. And the first two are just to clarify what's being requested at the special town meeting this fall versus what's actually projected to be borrowed. We did this last time, but we just wanted to reinforce the numbers because we did get some clarification from the Foster School Building Committee that the borrowing number for Foster is actually lower, which is excellent. So this first slide is focusing on Foster. And that special town meeting on November 1st, we need to request the full project cost. That's the $113 million number. This is a requirement from the MSBA program. So that $113 million number includes the grant amount. That's around $24.6 million, but could be more, depending on how it turns out. And it also includes some previously authorized money for the rest of the work on this project that had started a few years ago, including the feasibility study and the design development and pre-construction documents authorized this spring. But when we talk about the debt exclusion, the ballot question on the November 8th state election ballot, and what we actually project to be borrowed, we're actually talking about $87.6 or $7 million for Foster, which is great. So that math is the full $113 million project cost minus the MSBA grant. And we're using the smaller amount of the MSBA grant, just to be conservative. We're using a larger number to be borrowed for our projections. And it also includes the $3.1 million for the pre-construction documents from this spring. But our presentation last week had included a $91 million number, so this is great. And then just to summarize again, this slide shows the public safety facility. At special town meeting November 1st, we'll be requesting the $46.7 million. That's the balance needed to construct the building, furnish and equip it. But the November 8th debt exclusion will also pull into that amount, $1.6 million that we had previously authorized this spring for pre-construction documents. So that borrowing amount is about $48.3 million. But I think the main slide that folks are looking for, like Tom said, we wanted to summarize the projected tax impact on residents. And what you're looking at here is the 10-year average. So we've listed three different percentiles of assessed value, looking at all the assessed value, not just residential, but residential and commercial in town. We're showing you the 25th percentile, the 50th percentile, which is the median, and the 75th percentile, because we wanted to get a sense of, you know, quarters of the population and what their estimated tax impact might be. So if you look in the middle here, we're starting with, again, these are all 10-year averages. But the base property bill over that 10-year period, for someone with the 25th percentile, this is an assessed value of about $552,000. Their base property tax bill for those 10 years would be about $7,400. Per year, the annual tax increase for Foster over those 10 years is about $265, and for the public safety facility is $176. So if both of those projects are approved, their new property tax bill, including both of those projects for the 10-year, the average is about $7,800. So a quarter of the town would have a tax impact that's less than this. So if we move then to the 50th percentile, again, this is the median value. The base property tax bill here on average for the 10 years is about $9,900. The increase then for Foster per year is $356. For the public safety facility, it's $236. And that again gives you a new property tax bill of $10,505 for the median. And then finally, we wanted to show the 75th percentile. So this means that a. And then finally, we wanted to show the 75th percentile, so this means that, you know, 75% of the community will have a property tax impact less than this, and a quarter of the community will have a property tax impact that's greater than this. For the 75th percentile, the assessed value is 1,028,000. So their base is about 3, 13,788, the annual increase for foster then looks like $495, again, on average per year for the 10 years, $329 for the public safety facility for a new total property tax bill on average of 14,612. We also, you see below this black line, just for transparency's sake, we wanted to talk about a potential override for the spring, we have a note here that this is something that will be discussed at annual town meeting in the spring, but are also showing for the $4.9 million current preliminary FY24 deficit, that's what we talked about last time, if an override of that size is passed, we're also showing the projected tax impact for each of these percentiles. So for the 25th percentile, that's another $359, for the median assessed value, that's 481, and for the 75th percentile, that's about 669. And just a quick note on some of the assumptions that, that went into these projections, it's what we talked about last time, it's assuming that we're borrowing both for foster and public safety for 30 years, or paying it back over 30 years. For foster, it's a level debt service payment, and for public safety, it would be a level principal payment, which means that the debt service for public safety would decline over time. We're using the current interest rate assumptions that Capital Markets Advisor talked about at our last meeting, and we are, these projections do include the use of $7 million from the stabilization fund, that's another question before the special town meeting this fall, applied between FY25, '26, '27, and '28. And I think, yeah, and I talked about the, using the preliminary for FY24 forecast deficit for the override numbers. Well, we thought this would be kind of a handy reference to at least give people three different points, so you can kind of see, based on your assessed value, what might be closest to you, and to understand the quarters of the town being above and below these numbers.
If I could just jump in, just to kind of put a finer point on some of what Michelle just said, I think what, the important note to hear here, and people see tables like this and numbers, and they want to latch on to them, and they want to say, oh, it's going to cost me, you know, if I, my assessed value is $500,000, it's going to cost me 100, and something less than $176 for the public safety facility, or less than 265 for foster. I would draw everyone's attention to that list of assumptions, that's a long list of assumptions of things that we do not know will come true. Most of them may, some of them likely won't, we're using best guess assumptions for interest rates from our professionals in that field, but we're projecting interest rates two years from now. If we could do that, none of us would be sitting here. So there's, there's a lot of guesswork that goes into this kind of projection, one thing I can say for sure is that these numbers will not be 100% accurate, there will be something different when we get to actually doing this. And, and just also to point out, one of the other base assumptions in here is that we really will be, we're going to be in bands, most likely, for the first two years, that's what this assumption requires. That could be one year, frankly, it could be five years, it very much depends on the interest rate at the time that we actually make these decisions. So, a lot of, a lot of educated, very smart people made a fair number of estimates and guesswork that went into these numbers, so please don't latch on to these numbers too tightly, but we do think that it gives people a good sense of the, the likely tax impact that they're going to feel.
Great, thank you, I mean, and, I think each week we continue to get, drill down on the information to get more information out of the taxpayers, so this is great, Michelle, so thanks very much.
Sure.
Joe, any questions?
Well, appreciate everything, I do have a couple of questions, I'm going to start with nomenclature, because I noticed we've been calling this a debt exclusion. So, of course, I went online, and there are two things, one is there's a debt exclusion, and the other is a capital outlay expenditure exclusion. Is this a debt exclusion?
Yes.
Could you, because my understanding is that the capital outlay debt exclusion is for the purpose of raising funds for capital project costs.
I believe that the capital outlay exclusion is just, like, from the current tax levy for that one year, if that makes sense, like, to raise additional funds through the levy for a capital project now, versus a debt exclusion that's allowing us to pay back the debt service over a period of time through those additional funds in the tax levy.
Okay, I mean, you're, you're comfortable that this is the right designation?
Yes.
Yeah, we've been through this with Rick Manley, Bond Counsel.
So, on, on the chart here, I'm not sure I understand the numbers, so the first one, on, just the 25th percentile, so the base property bill, is that the average base property bill over 10 years?
It's the average, so it would be, if you push it through the model, we would take each year's base property bill, which grows by the 2.5% and the CPA surcharge, so for each of those 10 years, an average is it.
So...
So in the beginning, it'll be, in year one, it will be smaller than this number, and by year 10, it will be bigger, because it's growing over time, but that's the average for the 10-year period of that base bill without these projects.
So, I know the average and median are different, but conceptually, is this basically the year five number?
I don't, I'd have to go, I'd have to go double check, maybe.
If the average and median were the same, then this would be between year, you know, year five and year six, this would be what you, what you'd see.
I think it would be, because we're projecting 2.5 in a level for, for the tax base increase and the level two for CPA every year, so...
I think that might be true for the base bill and not necessarily for the projects.
Right, so, but even for the base bill, because it's 2 and 1/2, and that 2 and 1/2 compounded.
That's right.
So actually, the average will be higher than the median, so this is, this is maybe year six or year six and 1/2, rather than year five, but it's, conceptually, it's, we're looking at one year, and it's not what's going to happen next year, or whatever you vote, it's really an average year, it's, it's a middle year, some middle year in time. I would think, at least what I would want as a voter to know, if I pass, if this happens, how's this going to affect me next year? So it'd be helpful, you know, I know you're working on the calculator, for people to be able to make that assessment.
And we can certainly show that, and I think where John Asher's model comes in handy, and that is on the website, it's, it's complicated for folks to use, but we can kind of figure it out in a way to simplify it. The reason why we didn't show just the year one impact here is because, like Tom said, we're just doing, you only see the band interest in the first year, so we didn't want to understate it, so that it was hard for us to pick one year, or maybe we'd have to show sort of year one, year five, year 10, to kind of give people a sense, but we settled on the, on the 10-year average for now to try to capture some of the way it's going to fluctuate over time.
Sure.
And that it was, and the other point was that it's a reasonable amount of time for any resident today to, to visualize their impact to their family.
Okay.
A 10-year window, a 30-year window gets kind of long when people like, am I going to be here 30 years from now, so...
Okay, so then the annual tax increase for foster, so the 265 number, is that the amount that someone's property tax bill would increase each year?
Yes.
So...
On average, right.
So on average, so after five years, you know, you're talking about like $1,400, because if it's, if it's each year, so...
That's right, if you think of the cumulative.
Right, so the cumulative impact, which is what people are going to say, what's my bill going to look like in three years, is not up by 265, is up by three times that.
No.
That's what I want, I, I thought this was the average annual increase, so that each year, this is the increase, so...
Is the, no, go ahead, John.
Hold on, John, we have, we have our, one of our subject matter experts, John Asher. John, just take your name and address for the record, please, if you don't mind.
Yeah, Jonathan Gisher, 5 Compton Street, Hingham.
Thank you.
Joe, the, the averages that are highlighted in the log there, I guess, are also 10-year averages, so in answer to your question, the 265, you multiply by 10, and you'd be, you'd be under three in terms of the, the average for, over the 10-year period, the total of the average, that makes sense?
It's not increasing by that amount each year, it's 265.
On top of your base.
You're paying for foster, on top of your base bill.
On average per year.
But that's, this is, so I guess I'm, I'm still not understood, so the 265 on the line that's led, that the, the annual tax increase for foster, so that's not an annual number, or, or is it?
It's the annual tax number, it's not, it's not an annual tax increase, it's, but it is an annual tax dollar.
It's the average of the annuals, so they, they vary, but on average, over 10 years, it's 265.
So, let me just, if I can just work through some easy numbers, so if the tax is going up to, say, $100 in year one, and it's going to go up an additional $100 in year two, and then an additional $200 in year three, so that's a total of $400 that it's increased over three years.
Yep.
Okay, and so what number would be represented here? Would it be the four?
133.
So it'd be the 400 divided by 3, so that in fact...
133 would be represented there.
Right, so that, in fact, the impact, I would in fact multiply what would be here by the number of years.
Right.
Right.
For cumulative.
Right, 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 so that, so that, as a resident, if I'm looking at, well, what will this look like to me in three years or five years, I don't look at this one, I've got to multiply it by the number of years to which I am, if I'm projecting that for five years, so the impact, it would be five times the 265, that's the increase.
Sure.
Cumulative, but not like in that fiscal year's bill?
Not in that year, it's the cumulative.
Right.
Right.
Yes, the answer is yes, and I would get you close, yes.
Right, okay. And then, okay, so that makes sense, so the property tax building, including both, it's the same thing there. The override number, which is at the bottom, it's important that we have that for full disclosure, I think we've seen numbers that suggest that this is not going to be the only override, so that in five years, we may need another override. So, to what extent, particularly since we're looking at here numbers over 10 years, what, what is implicitly assumed here is that there will be only one override, when, I'm not sure we're in a position right now to make that commitment. So do we need to have any additional disclosure so that it's clear to residents that this is what's projected, assuming that there's only one override, when in fact, the numbers that we have suggest that that would not be sufficient?
Right, that's a good point, we, we, right now, we're having trouble projecting even the override for the spring, never mind what the override will look like in, in five years from now, but the, you're right in that our modeling suggests, and what we'll, I talked last week a little bit about agreements between the school committee and the select board, and try and find ways to limit the, the need for those overrides, but what we've seen in other towns is, they all try to goal, set a goal of about every five years for over, for operational overrides, and sometimes, through different methods, they're able to squeak it out to six, or maybe their goal was five, and they squeak it to, or four, and they squeak it to five, something like that. So you're right in that there will likely be another override on top of this one, within that 10-year window, but when and how much is that, to call that a guess is an understatement.
Yeah, but maybe we could add some language to the assumptions about that.
Yep.
And in terms of putting this in perspective, and Tom, I've spoken to you about this before, I think it would be helpful to, and I'm not sure where we would put it, to indicate what our levy ceiling is, and to indicate that we are significantly below that, so that, I mean, people may have a perception that, well, we're going to be doing these, you know, debt exclusion and potential override, you know, it's going to put us way above what Prop would otherwise allow in terms of a ceiling.
Okay.
And I think we're way below that, and I think that will add, give comfort to residents to say, in a broader perspective, the town is still, still doing fine.
Yeah, absolutely, we have that project, that slide already prepared, we can show it on a future presentation.
Great, okay, that's it, thank you.
Liz, any questions?
No questions, thank you for doing this, though, the presentation last week was great, but I think it is important to reinforce this and, and kind of delve into some details each week as we progress, just to remind people. I think all of these numbers are really helpful for us, and when, you know, residents are talking about, and they have 10 seconds to talk about it, the annual tax impact of foster is 356, and the annual tax impact of the public safety building is 236. I think those are our numbers that people are going to start rallying around to just understand, and then, of course, it's, nothing's guaranteed, you might be below or above that number, but I think that just helps ground us in the, in the conversation.
That's right.
So thank you.
If I can just pick up on that, so, in general numbers, round numbers, I have been thinking that foster is approximately twice the cost of public safety, and so I'm looking at the increase and say, well, 236, so why isn't foster twice that? We have the answer, in terms of the way it's being financed, but sort of, I think we should make it clear, you know, that these are the, that it's not an error in the model, in fact, this is how it works out, because there's that sort of ratio percentage, and that ratio is not showing up in these numbers here.
Okay, sure.
Joe, that's, that's a good point, that's a good point, and it really highlights the difference between the level principal and level debt service borrowing.
Yep.
Liz, anything else?
Nope, no other questions, thank you.
Any, any members of the public have any questions or comments?
I don't know if we can see the screen.
Tom O'Reilly. Tom, just name and address, if you don't mind, again.
Yes, no, thank you, Tom O'Reilly, 1940s Cove Road in MS, great presentation, really loved the way you're getting this down to some clear, simple bullet points for the public, so thank you for that. And you've probably looked at all this already, just one question about the amortization, and maybe it's a way of lowering the, the annual cost, we're using 30 years here, any reason not to use 40, 50, you know, some corporations use 100, 100 years, annual's not going to disappear all of a sudden, presumably it could capital-hungry amortization, and that might lower some of the annual impact, just a question.
Great question, Tom, we looked at 20 last year, too, I'm going to defer that to Michelle, if you don't mind.
Sure, good question, Tom, state law actually limits us to the 30-year borrowing period for, for these projects, that's the maximum we can borrow for anything in town.
100 would be great, though.
We did play, you know, we, we have been playing a little bit with the 20, I think we looked at 20 a little bit last year, too, so, awesome question, though, Tom, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I see Dr. Gallo, good evening, Dr. Gallo, how are you? Give your name and address, if you don't mind, Doc.
Dorothy Gallo, 1 Volontiate Road, I'm just looking at this chart, and one of you made a comment earlier that people will, will, will be embedded in their memory, because some people already remember from one of the town meetings, when there was an estimate, so making these things as clear as possible is, is really important, and I know you've tried to do that. I'm wondering if a simple change in the label of a couple of these lines might help that? In the second line, the annual tax increase, so that they don't confuse that it's the same number every year, but if you made it say, "average of annual tax increases," and the same thing for the public safety building.
That makes sense.
And then, down at the bottom, I think my fear would be, because I did this, so, I did it, somebody actually did it, not everybody, but somebody, where it says property tax increase for the 4.9 potential override, now that's accurate, no question that's accurate, but if you said the potential operating override, since everything else refers to the debt exclusion.
Yep.
Situation, so that you really are looking forward to a different thing.
That makes sense, thank you.
That's an excellent point, yes, yes.
All great points, thank you, Doc.
Thank you, that's an excellent point, thank you.
That was a, I was trying to get those numbers up at the top in some configuration to make that number at the bottom, and I read it two or three times, and I said, oh, wait a minute, that's talking about the override, and it says that, clearly says that, but that's the override, but, the other thing, could you flip that, the first slide?
Yep.
So...
You want that slide right there?
The town meeting request somewhere. Oh, where's just the debt exclusion ballot question? Is that the actual question?
No.
No.
No, no, okay.
No, that's not the actual, unfortunately, as, as you and I discussed a couple of weeks ago, the question's a lot more complicated.
Yeah, it is.
Give me the question on the ballot.
But it isn't the question that they're going to see on the ballot. That's the only confusion I'm trying to clever up.
No, and to that point, so the state prescribes the language we have to use for the ballot question, and it, it actually won't include a dollar amount.
Because actually, the number that is needed in the ballot question, right?
That's right.
That's correct.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so I would, I would look at, is there a better way to word that? So, that...
Yeah, okay.
Because I'm over, I'm a little over the top when it comes to ballot questions in terms of what you can say
Yeah.
In them and out them, and when, and all those things.
Right. And maybe next week, Michelle, we had talked briefly about this, but we could show what the actual ballot question language
Check.
Will be, and then an explanation.
Mm-hmm.
Because as you know, Dr. Gallo, it's not in very plain English.
Can we put that?
Somebody's going to say, if you're taking it out, which it should be in there anyway, but the, the question is, will you go beyond the limits of what 2.5 allows you to do?
Right.
And it doesn't need a number in it, and so, somebody's going to ask you if you take it out or take, if you will. And it's, it's already written anyway, that, that ballot is existing, and, and that's all what it is.
Dr. Gallo, what we'll do is we will make an agenda, an agenda item to actually show voters what the actual question is, so people can see what it is, because as you correctly pointed out, it is not eas, it's, it's confusing, and it's prescribed by state law, as you, as I'm sure you know, having done this a lot. So, we'll, we'll get what the question is, and we can kind of show it up on the screen so people become familiar with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Glenn Mangurian, good evening. Glenn, just name, name an address, if you don't mind.
Glenn Mangurian, for Huckleberry Hill. Joe Fisher's a lot smarter than I am, and if you go back to the next
I, I want that in the record.
The, yeah, the bad slide. I want to tell you what I did with that slide. I added the numbers. I missed what was in red, the 10-year average, and I said, oh, taxes are going to go up 11%. I took the median at the 50% top. So, that's where my eyes went. Now, both Doc and I were math majors in, in, in college, and I'm not very good in anything past algebra. But I didn't understand this slide, and I didn't understand what the purpose of this slide was, but you could see that Joe asked a lot of questions about it also. What I'm interested in, what I think the average resident is interested in, is give me the next five years and just tell me what the taxes, the property taxes, you can tell me for 25th percentile, 50th percentile, 75th percent, how are they going to rise? That's all I'm interested in. Because I'm, I can't get my mind around the 10-year average.
Right.
Now, it may be meaningful to you. I, I don't, I don't understand it yet, but you don't have to explain it to me. What's important for me is to tell you what I'm interested in is the next five years.
Okay.
And you can tell me what it would be for Foster, adding Foster, what it would be for Public Safety, and what it would be for what you're estimating the potential override to be. So, now I can say, any, pardon?
No one said anything?
Go ahead.
No, no, Glenn, no one said anything. Go ahead.
And I understand that 4.9 is an estimate, but, you know, people want to, want to have some sense of what the scale is of that and what the impact would be. The only other thing I would say, and it's a small number, but in people's mind, we had country club, excuse me, we had swimming pool, we have Foster, we've got Public Safety, we have override, all in 12 months. And so, you might just give some indication of what the swimming pool is, that that's, I know that's already history, but people think about these things in aggregate, all right? They think of individually as well as in aggregate, because they're paying for them in aggregate. So, that's pretty much my, my comment. But I applaud, although I don't know John Asher, the Asher model, I, I hope is proprietary and patented, and Michelle continues to do a wonderful job. And I know this is a very complex situation, and what you have to do is make complex things simple. And, you know, that's what leaders do. They take complex things and try to make them simple.
All doable. Thank you, Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn. Appreciate it.
I'll just jump in and add that the model that's generated these averages is now posted on the town website as of this evening. So, it's, if, if you want to see the complexity behind this attempt at simplifying the numbers, it's there for you to use. And the first page is called Overview, and it's a set of instructions for how to manipulate the model.
Just an addendum, this is all very complex, and there's no way that a town meeting, you can explain all the thinking that has gone into this. Wants it to be simple, and they will make it simple by saying, well, it's just too much money, or, you know, it's, why is it so expensive? And they will make it simple, and, and their making this simple doesn't necessarily do what's actually going on justice.
Right.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anybody else? Doc, your hand is still up. Did you want to add anything else? Okay, I don't think so. Okay. Anybody else like to add any comment, any public comment or any questions? All right, I appreciate everybody participating tonight. That was great. And Michelle, thanks again for your, for putting that together. All right, next item on the agenda, our appointments. I believe we do have an, yeah, we do have an appointment this evening.
Do you?
Yep, we do. I'm sorry, we do not have an appointment this evening. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to defer that to next week. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody have any public comment tonight? Seeing none. We would move to Town Administrator Select Board reports. Michelle, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Tom?
I just want a very brief thing. So, we have our second scheduled blood drive tomorrow down at the Senior Center. So, we have, of our 32 available spots, 31 of them have been filled, which is a fantastic turnout, similar to what we had last time, but that means there's still one more available. So, anyone who wants to sign up, hop online and, and sign up or come on down to the Senior Center, and I'm sure they'll find a spot for you.
Any questions, Liz?
No questions. Thank you.
Joe?
Just one, one announcement, or?
Would you have any, do you have a question?
Oh, no questions. I'm sorry. We're not up to the report, then I will.
No.
No questions.
Well, well, why don't we go to select board reports? Joe, go ahead. Leave right into it.
I will just jump in saying that this coming Sunday night and Monday is the Jewish New Year, so happy new year to, to us all. Thank you.
Excellent.
Happy new year.
Liz?
I just wanted to announce that we're doing office hours, all of us, but knowing that this is some very complex topics, talking about the debt exclusions and getting ready for the special town meeting. So, we will post this on the website, right, and send it out via email, but the first one is actually tomorrow via Zoom. I will be hosting at 7:00 PM. And there will be two, three next week, and, or two next week and two the following week. And then, we're hoping to do one at Linden Ponds in October. I also wanted to just kind of acknowledge that September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, a time to raise awareness of this very difficult topic. And our Health Department and Board of Health have resources. They're on our website, but certainly if, if you or someone you know is experiencing a mental health crisis, you can call or text 988 immediately. So, it's not 911, but there actually is a separate phone number if you have a mental health crisis. Thank you.
Liz, thanks very much. I have nothing this evening, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourned.
Second.
All those are favored by real call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, while this meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a great evening.